Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the seventeenth of February 2022 City National Planning Board. Could we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here in a love.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan.
Here.
Alderman John Cathy.
Present.
Ben Clemens. And we have a core, and because Maggie's gonna be voting via Zoom, we should do a roll call vote.
Sure. Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, next up in our agenda, we have approval of the minutes in your packets. You do have a set of minutes from January twentieth, 2022. Has anybody on the board had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or whether they need amendments? Go ahead, Mr. Meehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A move to adopt the minutes as written.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the January twentieth, 2022 minutes as written by Mr. Meehan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that?
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Mark Meehan.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have minutes from February third, 2022, Planning Board meeting. Anybody had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the February third, 2022 Planning Board meeting as written.
All right, so I have a motion to accept February third, 2022 minutes as written by Mr. Ballinger. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Up there.
Mark Meehan.
Yes.
And Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, next up, communications.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. You should have received an email on February sixteenth from Matt Sullivan regarding correspondence for the rezoning that's scheduled for this evening, and that is all we've got.
Okay, thanks. Next up, I'll read the procedure of the meeting and hearings for everybody. So essentially, after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will determine first if the application's complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree to the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant questions of the applicant or staff. Next, I'll ask for testimony from the public. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan to speak. This is your time to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for record, and your time to express any concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony wishing, for anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will be given then a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask, at this time, both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. We wanna be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all our applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'd ask everybody for their interest and courteous attention, and ask if you do have a cellphone, go ahead and put on silence or vibrate at this time, and if you are on Zoom, to remain on mute until, until I ask for any public testimony if you so desire. Okay, first up on the agenda, we have old business conditional special use permits. We have case number eight twenty-one dash oh two nine zero, Elizabeth Liu owner, Matthew Plant applicant. This is a proposed special use permit to allow the construction of a single-family home with access from a paper street. This property is located at El Roby Street. This was originally postponed from the January twentieth, 2022 meeting. I don't think we've taken jurisdiction with this, so. So first up for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that as to old business eight twenty-one dash zero two nine zero, the application is complete and is ready for the board to take jurisdiction.
All right, so you have that motion by Mr. Barley to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Can we get a roll vote on the jurisdiction, please?
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Mark Meehan.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. It looks like we have somebody to present for the applicant, so go for it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at three Congress Street here in Nashua. Here this evening, representing Mr. Matthew Plant and Mrs. Elizabeth Liu, who are both in the audience with me tonight. Also joining me in the audience is attorney Brad Westgate, who is providing legal counsel for the applicants. We've come before you seeking approval of a special use permit for a single-family home construction at nineteen Roby Street. Should be noted that Mr. Plant and Ms. Liu currently live next door at seventeen Roby Street. It's their intent to construct a home on the nineteen Roby Street lot, is a retirement home that they'll move into. So this is strictly a home construction for themselves, it's not geared towards creating a home, flipping a lot, or whatnot. The applicants are doing this for, for them to live in. We're here tonight because of section one ninety-eight of the Nashua Land Use Code. That's where a special use permit for development of lots with access from a paper street. Quickly, some general information about the lot. It is lot one oh three on map one twenty-six. It's point two four eight acres in size, which is ten thousand eight hundred square feet. It's zoned RA urban residence. The butters directly to the south, it is, are the owners at seventeen Roby Street, and then surrounding the lot on, on all three sides is city-owned land, which leads to the Salmon Brook wetlands. This has been a bit of a lengthy permitting process, given that there is wetland buffer across the majority of the land because of Salmon Brook. So we have been before the Conservation Commission on January seventh, 2020, and we were approved to impact a seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. We've gone before the zoning board of adjustment twice. On the first time, on October thirteenth, 2020, we were granted a special exception to work within the seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer. And actually, just because of the location of the wetlands and the fact that the buffer is seventy-five feet, the majority of the lot does fall within that buffer. That same evening, we were also granted a variance on lot frontage, where sixty feet is required and zero feet is proposed. We were granted another variance on lot width, where seventy-five feet is required and zero feet is proposed. And the zero feet has to do with the fact that the lot is, is on a paper street. The second time we went before the zoning board was October twelfth, 2021, and we were granted a special exception to work within the seventy-five-foot wetland buffer to construct a long driveway retaining wall of approximately thirty-five to forty feet. Utilities, the new house lot will be serviced by sewer force main, Penachuck Water Works, Liberty Utilities Gas, and Underground Electric Telecommunications and Cable. Some site characteristics, the topography pitches towards the westerly corner of the site, so basically, kind of once you get to the end of Roby Street and head towards the site, it goes down to, to the lower left corner, as the majority of that land falls away towards the Salmon Brook wetlands. The paved portion of Roby Street, which is currently, is considered the publicly maintained portion of Roby Street, that's, if you look at my plan on the board, that's represented by the perpendicular small green line there, that kind of roughly bisects where seventeen Roby Street is. So, so that's really where Roby Street ends. In what our lot does, in addition to constructing a house on nineteen Roby, we're extending from the end of Roby more or less a driveway, which will act, which will allow access from the end of what we know as Roby Street now, to the portion of the driveway that is actually going to be on the nineteen Roby Street lot. Stormwater, we have two yard drains in the north and west corners of the lot. We meet the stormwater regulations for the two ten- and fifty-year storms. There's a slight, slight increase in the hundred-year storm, but we consider that to be negligible, given the, where it rains to, and the fact that there's, there's so much wetlands in the existing grass areas of the site. There really is no impact downstream by the increase. The lot address, the fire marshal's office did assign it an address of nineteen Roby Street. Since we are applying for a special use permit, there are six points of this special use permit. You should have all received that in your packet, but I'd like to quickly run through what those, what those points are and how we meet them. The first point is adequate access of proper water, sewer, and other utility connections. So we have talked to all the utility companies. There are existing, the typical existing utilities out there, and, and working with Liberty and Penachuck on where they like their lines and how they, where they need to be run. We are able to appropriately fit all four utilities in underground. We've also talked to Joe Mendola of the engineering department, and we've received input from Mr. Hudson as well, in terms of, you know, properly spacing out those utilities and giving each of them somewhat of a, of a buffer, should, you know, in, in the future, there need to be any excavation for, for any repairs or whatnot. The second point is provision for snow removal and trash removal. Our plan shows a proposed driveway extending and connecting to the end of the existing Roby Street. Snow removal on the driveway that accesses Roby Street will be the responsibility of the owners. Trash removal will be as it currently is for the existing Roby Street homes. The third point, proper drainage for the driveway. We have graded the proposed driveway extension to pitch stormwater into the grass yard of the proposed home. There, it will be directed into two leech-and-catch basins, as I mentioned. Point number four, adequate access for emergency vehicles. An emergency vehicle will have adequate access to the site by continuing onto the driveway extension from the end of Roby Street. Point five, safe site distance for the driveway. Given the unique location and circumstances of where Roby Street ends and where the house will be located, there really shouldn't be any site distance issues, as there will be, obviously, there will be no vehicles coming from the north, since the, the road ends and the only extension to it really is our driveway. So, so any traffic coming from the home will be heading south on, on Roby Street. And point number six, no other substantial adverse impact on public health and safety. The proposed development is merely a single-family home that the applicants intend to build for themselves. While the majority of the site does sit within the seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer from Salmon Brook, the applicants have appeared before the Nashua Conservation Commission and the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment to receive the necessary approvals to work within that buffer. There is no proposed alteration of wetlands by this development. That concludes the, the six points that accompany the special use permit. Lastly, we are asking for one waiver, and that is the, the typical waiver that we ask for with regards to section one ninety dash two eight two B nine, and that is showing the existing conditions within a thousand feet of the site. As I've mentioned before, to accurately show those conditions, we'd have to survey approximately seventy-two acres of land, and that's not feasible for, for a number of reasons. We do, to help offset that, we do provide the planning staff with a, a map layout that we construct from the GIS, showing the existing conditions from an aerial view and all existing utilities and structures and whatnot. We believe that the site is being developed in a responsible manner and in accordance with the Nashua Land Use Code. The recommended conditions of approval are acceptable to our clients, and we respectfully seek your approval. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Okay, thanks. One quick question for me, the, the proposed, it looks like it's a proposed underground utilities to the, to the potential new residence, in terms of electric and, electric in particular. Is it underground?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's an existing pole across the street.
Yeah.
On, on the other side of Roby Street, and I know Mr. Plant and Ms. Liu have already talked to Eversource about this.
Yeah.
You know, there are a couple options. Could they go underground? Could they go, you know, ask for a waiver to, you know, allow, you know, an overhead connection? And the consensus with everyone is that underground would be better, just given the topography, the land, since it kind of pitches downhill, running wires across Roby and to the location of the new house, they'd probably hang a little lower than everyone would be comfortable with.
Yeah.
So, so going underground is, is the desired option for everyone.
Right, and that's, that's what your plan states, underground.
Correct, yes.
You definitely need a waiver from us to go overhead, right?
Right, yeah, no, no, we, we aren't asking for that waiver, we're showing underground.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is there anybody in the audience here wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, have a question of the plan? I'll ask the same for anybody on Zoom. I don't think there's many on there, is there?
No, there's nobody on there.
Nobody on there? Okay. Maggie, any questions? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan here? All right, I'll give the board one last opportunity to Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are the staff recommendations, this was originally supposed to be heard at the January twentieth meeting, are those recommendations still valid? And if so, do we need to add a stipulation indicating a date of the review letter from Joe Mendola, or have all engineering comments already been addressed?
So there are still some outstanding engineering comments. I do know that Mr. Auger and Mr. Mendola have been working together on this, but we would like, we would request that you would add a stipulation that prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments in a letter dated January twentieth, 2022, from Joe Mendola be addressed to the satisfaction of the Division of Public Works.
Could, could that, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up. Could, could that, could comment number two of the staff recommendation be reworded to include that? Because right now, it just says prior to the chair signing the plan, any minor drafting corrections will be made. If we reword that to include, address any comments?
Typically, we have that stipulation on there, so if there's any minor drafting corrections that need to be changed, it wouldn't have to come back to the board.
Okay, so if we, if we add an additional comment, comment five, or stipulation five, rather, that.
Yes.
Prior to certificate of occupancy, all comments of the January twentieth, 2022 letter are addressed.
Prior to the chair signing the plan.
Chair signing the plan, excuse me. Okay, very well.
Thank you.
No, thank, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Any other questions by the board? Dan?
Two, two things. One, it was presented that trash pickup would be as it is with the abutting property. I don't know, I, I didn't check ahead of this, what the process is. I know we've had other cases that people assumed we were gonna do trash pickup, and then we didn't, for whatever reason. This lot doesn't have frontage on a public street, so I'm not sure what the situation will be, so I just wanted to note that for the record, that we don't go away, assuming that's gonna happen. If, if we don't, if we won't do trash pickup on the street, which maybe we will, but if we don't, you know, five-dollar permit or whatever it is can be purchased and, and disposal at the landfill, so. Second thing is, I don't know, I was gonna ask staff if we need to add any conditions about approval from the BOA in order to be able to build on this site. I believe we have a referral later.
Right.
And so I don't know if we need to make our, our approval contingent upon approval of that.
Yeah, I'll let Matt comment on that.
The chair had asked me a similar question. You do not need to make any approval that you potentially offer this evening contingent upon the referral being approved. That's a required referral and approval under six seventy-four forty-one. It's assumed that the applicant will seek that relief, and therefore, there's no need for a specific condition related to it.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Hudson's comments, is there any way we can ensure that the trash pickup happens on this address? If there's already, if they've already implied that they think that that's going to happen, but we have concerns that it would not, is there any way to sort of stipulate that it will for sure happen, so there's no confusion, rather than making them go to the landfill?
I'm not sure, though, as, as the board, we could. I think that would be a Public Works.
Correct. My understanding is that Public Works has a, a policy for trash pickup.
Yeah.
And the, the planning board unfortunately can't overrule the Public Works policy on trash pickup, so it'd be subject to whatever policies they maintain.
Yeah. Follow-up? Sure.
So, Roby Street will be extended, so it'll be part of Roby Street, or no, just be a driveway?
So that, that's the interesting part. Roby Street is not being extended. This is functionally.
So where that game line is, that's where it's done?
Correct, yeah. So the street itself will not be extended.
All right, thank you.
Hence the issue about trash pickup.
Right, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the hearing, move on to the meeting, so. So we have in front of us, yes, again, this is a, a special use permit, so seems pretty straightforward. I don't have any particular concerns on my end, but I'm happy to hear any comments and discussion points by the board here. Mr. Meehan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I drove by earlier today, and I noted on Burnett Street, just a block up, looks like the same thing has happened there.
Yeah.
So there seems to be a precedent. It's been.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Ballinger?
I, I appreciate the, the applicant proactively seeking the underground utilities for electric. We've had that issue come up, and I know sometimes it's hit or miss, depending on the, the age of the neighborhood, so I appreciate the fact that, that they were, they were proactive on that matter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess I entertain a motion, if anybody wants to make one. Do you want to take it, Mr. Ballinger?
Certainly, Mr. Barley. Yes, yes.
I wish you were taking notes before.
No, no, that's okay. No, no, I, I appreciate it, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve old business case eight twenty-one dash zero two nine one, property located presently at El Roby Street, finding that it does meet the requirements of NRO section one ninety-eight, subject to the following stipulations. Stipulation number one, with respect to a waiver of section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, with respect to survey of existing conditions, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations two through four, as written by staff, and I would like to add a fifth stipulation stating that prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments of the letter dated January twentieth, 2022, from Joe Mendola are addressed satisfactorily by the applicant's engineering team.
Okay, prior to second, I'd just clarify for the record, it's eight twenty-one dash zero two nine zero.
Oh.
Case, but can you?
My, my apologies, Mr. Chair.
Just amend that.
Yes, case, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number eight twenty-one dash zero two nine zero.
Okay, got it.
El Roby Street, with all previous recommendations and stipulations, as, as already stated for the record.
Got it, thank you. All right, so we have that motion to approve with the five stipulations as indicated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second, second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Mark Meehan.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Next up on our agenda, or just moving through the agenda, I should say, under old business subdivision plans, case number eight twenty-one dash zero one seven seven, that's still tabled, they're, at this point, to the tenth?
Yes.
Okay. Old business site plans, none, new business conditional special use permits, none, new business subdivision plans, none, new business site plans, none. So next up, in other business, first off, we have a review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Has anybody on the board had a chance to review the tentative agenda, make a motion and wanna make a motion as to whether any of them have potential for regional impact? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that as a result of the technical review meeting of February seventh, 2022, there are no identified projects of regional impact.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger, there are no kinds of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, can we just get a roll on that, please?
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Mark Meehan.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. Next up, on other business, a referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed petition for authorization for issuance of building permits for a building on Private Road, nineteen Roby Street. So we have somebody here to present. Thanks. Go ahead. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, one eleven Congress Street here in Nashua, and I represent Elizabeth Liu and Matthew Plant. Also present tonight is Steve Auger, who just made the presentation on the special use permit application. So this matter, Mr. Chairman, is before the board, the planning board, based on referral from the Board of Aldermen. If I can just give a little bit of background, so you have the context, which I'm sure you've absorbed already anyway, but.
Sure.
So on January thirty-first. So, on January 31st, on behalf of Elizabeth Liu, I filed a petition with the Board of Aldermen to permit authorization of the issuance of building permits for a building on what's deemed a private road. This is required by statute. There's a statute known as RSA 67441. May be better with my mask off for clarity, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. You can, yeah, either way.
If everyone's hearing me, okay.
It sounds like maybe-
Mr. Westgate's choice.
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll try to be as clear as possible.
Sure.
So, this statute essentially says that if you don't have frontage on a city or town accepted street, then there are processes you have to go through to enable the local governing body, in the case of the city, the Board of Aldermen, to authorize the issuance of building permits on a lot that does not have frontage on a city or town accepted street. There's a number of possibilities. The typical ones are so-called class six roads, which is not our case here, or what used to be paper streets that never became city or town roads, and in effect devolved down to private roads. And that's our case in this situation. It's not a very common case in Nashua. We do have some streets that have small ends that were never accepted, never built out, such as this end of Robie Street. The statute was really designed more for the rural towns that had longer stretches of class six or paper streets or dirt roads that were never fully developed. So, as you saw in Steve's presentation on the special use permit just a few moments ago, this end of Robie Street extends beyond the publicly, publicly maintained component of Robie Street. So, looking back at Steve's plan, that small perpendicular line that crosses Robie Street at about the middle of 17 Robie, the plant and Liu present house, to the left of that, to the northwest of that, is the section of Robie Street never accepted, never built out. And the way this all happens is as follows. The, this is common from many, many years ago, subdivision plans were recorded with the Registry of Needs, as they've been for 150-plus years or so. And when they're recorded, they depict roads typically. Well, these roads are known as dedications to public servitude, which essentially means that when a subdivision plan is recorded and roads are shown on it, the subdivider, the property owner, developer, dedicates the roads to public servitude, meaning the city or town can then accept those roads or not accept them as it chooses. So, of course, in most cases, the subdivision is built out, the roads are constructed by the developer, and the city in due course accepts the streets. But sometimes the roads aren't finished, as in this case. This end of Robie Street was never built out and accepted by the city. So, the law at the time, this plan of what's known as Nashville Villa, this plan of the Catherine Street, Robie Street neighborhood, was first drawn in 1916. Well, the law at the time was that if 20 years passed and the city never built out or accepted the street, then this public servitude evaporated, vanished, and no longer was this section of Robie Street subject to the city having the right to accept it. The law has since changed, but at the time, that's what the status of the law was. So, after the 20 years of dedication from the subdivision plans recording, without it being built out, the, the ability for this part of Robie Street to become a city accepted street went away. When that happens, all that's left are private rights of ease, of access, effectively what we call implied easements, enabling lot owners, if you will, to have the right to traverse over the dirt road, the public, the private road, the paper street, but no longer it become a city street. So, with that background, the statute was established, which essentially says, that's fine, but you've got to go to the local governing body to, to see to it the local governing body authorizes building permit issuance in that case. Back in this past August, I had summarized to Mr. Sullivan this whole set of circumstances, which then kind of led to the need for ultimately seeking this petition before the Board of Aldermen for this authorization of a building permit on what is now essentially a private So, the statute, RSA 67441, Roman numeral 1D, sets forth some criteria for the Board of Aldermen to require in the granting of this authorization to allow a building permit to be issued. The board doesn't grant the building permit, of course. You still have to go through the normal building permit processes with the building department. But without the Board of Aldermen approval, a building permit can't be issued, even if you met all the department criteria. The couple of other criteria that are involved under that statute essentially to the effect that if a building permit's issued, the city is not responsible to maintain this section of the paper street portion of Robie Street, nor is the city liable for damages resulting from the use of it. And those concepts are to be recorded by instrument with the Registry of Needs. Those are automatic requirements if authorization is provided. And of course, the applicant readily understands that and would establish the document with, I'm sure, Corporation Council's review, recording at the Registry of Needs confirming there's no city responsibility for maintenance and no city liability for damage or use. The statute doesn't have in it sort of typical land use criteria like you're used to in site plan review, conditional use permit review, or the like. It doesn't delve into that. It just says the Board of Aldermen can vote to authorize building permit issuance on a private road, what was a paper street, but it needs input from the planning board. So, that's why it's been referred to you. The statute mandates the Board of Aldermen seek your input. So, what I would respectfully submit, Mr. Chairman, is that what was presented just a few moments ago in the special use permit application be incorporated as testimony into this referral application rather than me essentially repeating that? Because what happened was your section 190-8 in the land use code essentially deals with this same concept. 190-8 is derivative from the current statute that talks about roads becoming paper streets that derived from the old statute I referenced in the 20-year context. So, the land use code essentially created the criteria that you're used to dealing with in determining whether it was appropriate for this particular lot to have such an ability to get a building permit, those six criteria that Steve Auger went through. So, if we could incorporate that testimony into this referral, Mr. Chairman, I would submit that the, the case on the merits, if you will, besides the city lack of responsibility acknowledgement that we would do, the case on the merits has been satisfied because the special use criteria have been satisfied that delve into the appropriateness of a building permit being issued for this home. So, happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. Again, I mean, just in the interest of time and not droning on, I would just ask the board to reflect and incorporate in that testimony and its deliberation on this referral.
Okay. Thanks. Questions by the board for?
What's the process?
Well, maybe Matt can talk specifically about the process. I mean, typically, we do sort of be there positive referral with comments and negative referral with comments. Something like that. Would the incorporation of testimony be just be one of the comments essentially?
Absolutely. I think that I would-
Concur with the applicant's testimony or the petitioner's testimony that they did make the argument relative to 67441 that public health, safety, and welfare are not, you know, infringed on in any way by the proposed development at the end of Robie Street. I would recommend that you do incorporate the prior testimony as part of your comments. I would also recommend, in accordance with the 67441 relief that was granted back in 2020, that you also make any recommendations evening conditional upon final sign-off by the engineering and fire departments as their access and comment on the referral is particularly relevant. So, I would make any recommendation that you do dependent upon engineering and fire comments. But other than that, I do think the applicant has made a, a fair case for building permission on this particular lot based on the circumstances and based on the proposed access to the property.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions by the board? Okay.
I, I did have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Go ahead, Maggie.
Just in regards to the access to this property, is there an easement needed over the other lot currently owned by the applicant?
If I may answer, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Go ahead.
We will have to establish an easement over 17 Robie for the portion of the driveway that will sneak onto it and also for the utility services that'll come in, because the utility companies themselves may seek their own direct easements, too.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Since this is just an other referral, there's no public testimony on this part. Mr. Barley?
I know, I was gonna say, I think you could still ordinarily, I think we still take public testimony as their order, but.
Yeah. I don't know if there is anybody here that else wants to speak on this. There's nobody online, so. So, it would only be people here, so. Doesn't sound like it. I think we're, I think we're all set at this point, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully request that the board grant a favorable recommendation to the full Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. So, we can discuss amongst ourselves. It seems pretty reasonable to me. I mean, we obviously thought that the, the special use was, was reasonable and a good idea, so I don't know why we would frankly go the other direction on this.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I think, I think we sort of already made the substantive determinations.
Yeah. So, does someone want to try to make a motion on this unless there's anybody else that wants to speak differently on it?
Mr. Chairman, just a question for staff, and I apologize, I can't pull it up immediately. Is there a reference number to, to Board of Aldermen action, or do we, can we just refer to it generically regarding the property address? I, I don't have the recommendation number handy if there's a-
It's not on here.
No, I think you could just use the petition for authorization for issuance of building permits for a building on private road 19 Robie Street.
Okay. No, that's good enough for me. I just didn't know procedurally we needed to sign.
It's not necessary. We should have included it in the packet, but you don't need it in order to make a motion.
Okay. Want to make that motion?
I would, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion of a favorable referral to the Board of Aldermen on the proposed petition of authorization for issuance of building permits for a building on a private road, 19, to be known as 19 Robie Street, subject to the following conditions: review and approval by both the fire department and the Department of Public Works with regard to elements under their jurisdiction, as well as consideration of the testimony with regard to the site plan application given at this evening's hearing.
Good. So, we have that motion for favorable recommendation with the comments as indicated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further comments or discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Mark Mayan.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay. Next up, we have on our agenda here a referral for a petition to rezone Gateway Hills from Park Industrial District to the RC District. So, Mr. Ballinger, do you have a comment?
I did, Mr. Chairman. I apologize if this is not the appropriate time to bring it up. Perhaps before we hear any testimony on this, I would be interested in perhaps Mr. Sullivan just giving a little introduction on, on the letter that he sent yesterday. It was, it was, there's a lot to digest there, and I guess I just want to make sure I, I understand that prior to the applicant going into, I assume the petitioner, rather, is going to provide some information, but I just sort of wanted to understand what staff's position was prior to, to that, if that's permissible.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I'm happy to comment briefly. I will say that prior to doing so, my intent was to avoid as much verbal comment this evening as possible on the petition by writing the letter that was provided to you as part of your packet, but I am happy to just provide a brief overview. The city has been working collaboratively with the Flatley Company, I think, for several, several decades, decades upon decades upon the development of these properties within the Terra Heights Gateway Hills area. There have been a variety of development projects proposed, built, permitted in that area, and obviously, I think the Flatley Company has done tremendous work for the city of Nashua in providing critical housing and industrial space amongst other uses on site as well. That said, we do have concerns, I think, about the proposed rezoning, and perhaps not directly related to the rezoning that's before you this evening, but perhaps more related to the compounding impacts of different projects being proposed and subsequently approved by the planning board there. Clearly, this is a, a large number of tracts of properties that would be potentially developed in the future, and our intent of this letter was simply to express concern and caution about how those long-term impacts and projects are contemplated, both by the planning board and, of course, by the Board of Aldermen as you consider this rezoning. I will say for the record that the planning department, or at least myself, speaking as the planning department, we have no objections to the proposed rezoning to residential. We know that housing is a critical need for the city of Nashua. We do also acknowledge that industrial spaces are limited and are growing more limited by the day, but we do respect the interest in proposed housing on this site, and we certainly do not object to that. What we do want to ensure is that any such housing proposal is accompanied by appropriate off-site and on-site mitigation to ensure that not only this development, but also proposed developments moving forward are appropriately planned for. You'll see within that letter that we do make some recommendations specific to not only the rezoning itself, but also larger concepts such as a development agreement and a master development plan. I would propose that those are not necessarily subject to the planning's, planning board's review this evening. Those are Board of Aldermen level matters, but we did want to write this as a joint statement for all three boards and committees' consumption. That said, again, we are, certainly myself, I am not objecting to the proposed rezoning. This letter is intended only to signal concerns that we have about potential future redevelopments as well. So, hopefully, that provides a little context.
It, it does, Mr. Chairman. If I just make a follow-up quickly. If, if, if the planning board were, were to, to go favorably or give a favorable recommendation on this petition, would we need to stipulate in any way that conditions addressed in, in staff letter dated February 16th be addressed, or is, is that too heavy for this board to, to take up at this time?
In my opinion, that is too heavy, in your words, for the board to stipulate. I think you are, you're fully within your purview to make recommendations based on the zoning itself, and certainly to make a recommendation that any proposed development is appropriately mitigated off-site. The reason I say that is partially just based on the jurisdictions at play here and partially based on the fact that you will ultimately review whatever project comes forward as a result of this rezoning request. And so, at the risk of sort of poisoning the well in some way for what will ultimately come forward, I would ask that the board be as jurisdictionally correct as possible in reviewing this rezoning.
Yeah. And, and I think specifically our intent, our purpose here is reviewing this petition for rezoning in terms, we're just making comment on it at this point.
You're, you're making comment-
We have no approval of any-
And you're reviewing it in the context of the master plan. That is your role here.
Yeah.
And while the master plan did not provide specific recommendations for this site, clearly there are larger concepts spoken to within the master plan that may be applicable here, including housing, industrial uses, and the like. And so, your, your role is really to look at this in the broader context of that master plan.
Yeah. And then, the only other question I might have is specific, just for reference for everybody, and this could be there, you matter, or maybe someone who's going to speak to this can talk, to give a kind of a, a little bit of a detail on what the difference between Park Industrial and RC zones are specifically, you know? What, what types of uses, you know, are we talking about? I mean.
Yeah. I had promised the petitioner I wouldn't say much this evening, so I don't want to say too much before they have a chance to speak. I think we had talked in the hallway about that, but-
They want to address that.
Functionally, it is a change from what is largely a commercial and industrial use to a residential zoning district. That is, at its core, that is what is being- to a residential zoning district. That is, at its core, that is what is being proposed. Obviously, as you've seen from the rezoning materials, the petitioner's intent is to construct a multifamily development along, within the property area that's being discussed, and obviously getting an RC overlay or an RC-based district rezoning is critical to doing that.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Meehan?
I'm sorry, I'd love to ask just one more question, if you don't mind, just to clarify the letter.
Yeah.
On the second page, under the off-site infrastructure impacts and mitigation, you note that the reference R and D facility submitted to the city in 2017 was neither reviewed nor approved by the city's planning board. Is that a procedural issue? Is that a timing thing?
I don't want that comment to mean more than, as it's simply stated, it was submitted, it was never formally decided upon by the planning board. There were no, I'm not aware of any specific public commentary or board commentary on the application. The applicant may wish to clarify that, and so I do not mean to imply that there was negative review or reaction to that application. I provide that fact only as context.
Thank you.
Great, so, does somebody here from the applicant want to give us some update on their petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jerry Prunier. I'm an attorney in Nashua. What office is that, 22 Feltus Square in Nashua? Matt did a good job, because most of the stuff that happened regarding the Flatley Company was before his time, so he did a good job trying to put stuff together to see what happened. We've been trying to build roughly 300, I'll say it's a little bit less than, 300 apartments for the city of Nashua. It helps with the city's help, the needs, which, as Matt pointed, is 5,000, over 5,000 probably, and by the time we get this built, it'll probably be more than 5,000. We, and as Matt has also stated, that there's no objection to the building of these things, but that there's some things that he wanted to bring to the board's attention, and I say to you that what we would like is a clean recommendation that the rezoning happen, and the other conditions that were pointed in here, as Matt said again tonight, that some of those conditions, I will say, most of those conditions are within your purview, and when we come here, if everything works out shortly, you're gonna see us all again. We're all gonna be here. So, unless, we were all here tonight to answer any of the questions, I will say to you that unless you have some dire need to have those questions answered, wait to the second time when we come through, and maybe you have a better, you'll have more questions based upon the fact of the plan. Without the plan, it's difficult for you to look at, and as Matt again states, the number of units that'll be proposed to you, and the manner in which they're proposed to you, you're gonna have to consider. You're gonna have to consider the traffic issues. In fact, we have given the planning staff a letter saying that we will provide the traffic as needed, but that will have to be determined by you after listening to the traffic professionals and make a determination as to what's needed in that area based upon that. The same thing with the affordable housing. There's an ordinance that pass. The ordinance speaks for itself, it takes care of it, it's the law. All of the other issues, you're gonna have to consider under your powers as the planning board. We would like the board to make a recommendation, but a clean recommendation that they, you recommend passage. Maybe you don't want to do that, because we'll have to come back and spend some time with you, but in any case, we'd like to see that done without any of the conditions, because you're gonna be putting those conditions on the site plan when it comes back. We're here, we're willing to ask, answer any questions. It's up to you.
Okay, Mr. Marley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is really more comment than a question, and I don't disagree with you in terms of the...
Could I ask you to speak a little louder, Adam?
Yes, sorry, you hear it all.
I'm starting to get a little older and I'm having a little problem with my hearing.
So I was saying, I agree with you that the, I think that the, any specific conditions would be part of the, you know, the site plan review process. With that said, and I think it's alluded to in the letter here that Matt was discussing, that there obviously been a series of projects that have been developed on these parcels, and, you know, over the years, we've talked about the fact that, you know, in a number of instances, it hasn't been the project that's, you know, sort of tipped the balance, that would require the more substantial improvements, off-site improvements, that we think would ultimately be necessary, you know, when the larger development comes, and so I guess, you know, my comment would simply be, and again, I think, sort of echoing some of the comments in the letters, that we just want to make sure that the Flatley Company understands that when that project does come, I hope they will be, you know, well-prepared to address those issues, you know, in, you know, in a, you know, in a level of detail and with a level of commitment that we would expect based on the prior plans we've reviewed and the prior discussions we've had.
This is a, this letter is a good diagram for us to follow, to answer the questions when we do come to the board, that we know what questions that we will have to answer.
Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, appreciate many of the projects that Flatley has completed here in Nashua, and I understand the vision for the city, and in that light, I also appreciated the specific notations in the letter regarding a master development agreement on this piece of property, as it is such an important piece of property here in Nashua, and is that, I mean, it sounds like that's something you are quite willing to do as a process anyway.
We're in the process, really. We've been in the process for over a year. We've been working with the city for the development agreement, the whole thing. We haven't been able to get there, we're getting closer, but haven't been able to get there. That's why we cut this piece out, because the development was for the whole site, the 400 acres that remain and so forth, was the, to cut this piece out and went for variance, and they thought it was too large, and I agree with the ZBA, it's too large, it should come to the Alderman for rezoning. So, we went through this, that process, and that's the process we're trying to go through.
Go ahead, Mr. Meehan.
If I could just clarify, then, so, a, an agreement or an approval of this proposal with the stipulation that you would bring it to a full master development plan and end with the city, that's not a problem for you guys?
I really, if you ask my opinion, I think it's gonna hinder our development of the project. We want to keep the zoning clean for when we have to put mortgages or financing in to make sure that it's clean, but we know we're still gonna work, because we have 400 acres. We want to get that taken care of. However, those 400 acres are zone Park Industrial, and until the city makes a decision otherwise, that'll stay, and that's our intent at the present time. But, you could, when we come in, request a development agreement that will have different conditions in it.
Okay. Question? I mean, I'm just, procedurally, I just have a question. I mean, we keep using the term stipulations here, but we're not really putting stipulations on anything. This is, we're still in a referral and recommendation stage.
Right.
So, we don't, we're not, and this is just, I'm talking to the board here, this is, you know, we're not the authority for the rezoning, so, we're really just providing comment on whether we think the land use, the zoning change proposed is consistent with what we think is appropriate for the, for the land, and the land use, and is it consistent with the master plan, our typical kind of agreements? So, so I think, you know, when you're thinking about this on the planning board now, we should, you know, again, think about what we want to pass along to the, to the Board of Alderman in terms of what would our recommendations and testimony, but again, we're not approving kind of anything. We don't have that authority.
So finally clarifying, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So the letter is very, very clear about master development agreement as a concern from the city staff. Does our recommendation back to the Alderman include that statement? That we would also, we would agree that that should be part of the process?
We can comment anything, you know, well, but the Board of Alderman can take it or leave it, essentially.
Yeah.
I would just add that that's sort of the fine line that I think exists here, where a development agreement and a master development plan, although they are recommended by this letter, really to the Board of Alderman, I do believe that perhaps is beyond the planning board's scope of review right now. Now, would a recommendation be appropriate to say that the rezoning is acceptable, subject to appropriate off-site mitigation, that it sort of reflects a long-term master development plan and master development agreement? I think that would be acceptable, but I would caution you against making any recommendation to the Board of Alderman to execute a master development agreement or anything of that nature. That comment in here is really intended for the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Board of Alderman, who are best positioned to weigh in in that fashion.
Okay.
Hence, the, you know, sort of the detriment of writing a joint letter in this way, it appears to be directed to all audiences, that is really directed to the Board of Alderman and their authority.
Alderman Kathy?
Being on the board, housing and infrastructure, at this current juncture in our cities, our life tends to be pretty high on the radar, especially given the master plan and the need for housing, so my thoughts would be, once this comes to the board, it will be fully vetted pretty heavily because of the housing issue that we have, and so...
Sure.
I think it would be appropriate for just to straight recommend or not recommend, and then let us work out the details, because I'm sure we will quite a bit, because of the housing issue, we'll probably go over it quite a bit and see if it meets the city's needs that go along with the master plan, and if that gives any clarity to the situation.
Sure. Yeah, and I guess I would just make the comment that, you know, ultimately, you know, we'll come back our site plans, and we'll be able to sort of evaluate those as well in our criteria. You know, and things like master development agreements, they, there are inputs to that, but they don't dictate, you know, at this point, what we're looking at, so...
The one exception that I would make is that the applicant did supply a confirming letter this evening relative to the Spitbrook Road improvements, that I do think do have a very rational connection, rational nexus connection to the proposed rezoning here, and so I think what would be appropriate is for this board to make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, that if they are going to approve the rezoning, that any Spitbrook Road improvements be provided in accordance with the letter. Now, the letter refers to the planning board approval and conditioning the Spitbrook Road improvements upon issuances of certificates of occupancy. I'm not gonna comment on whether that's acceptable or not at this time, but I think the critical issue is that the applicant or petitioner is willing to provide those improvements as part of the development that's contemplated here.
Mr. Marley?
Just one other question, and I don't know if this is much for you, attorney, or for someone else from the team, but, given the references to the new master plan, I was just wondering if, you know, for the record, if you could speak to sort of, you know, the petitioner's views about how this rezoning would, would be consistent with the goals of the master plan, in particular, I guess, the balance between, you know, the goals of the master plan with respect to, you know, park industrial uses and the goals of the master's plan with respect to, you know, with respect to housing.
My understanding of the master plan is that, as I think Matt indicated the same thing, is that they need housing, but they weren't going to necessarily make recommendations at the wood property and so forth, and how many units for each property. My own feeling is that it's glad that the master plan made those recommendations. I think that the problem that we have here in Nashua is we don't have much land left. So, where are we gonna, you know, do this? So there may be some recommendations, or some people will want to do some things, that have more density, and they're probably gonna have to go to the zoning board, unless I can convince the powers-to-be to increase the density from 12.5 to a higher number based upon the fact of our need in the city.
Other discussion, comments? I mean, I mean, I guess it's reasonable for us to all talk amongst what we think is our, what we think of it. That's perfectly appropriate in this forum. You know, I look at this, and certainly, the construction of this many housing units in that location seems like a positive thing. I mean, it's been successful so far, obviously, wildly. You know, it's pretty consistent with the development around it. You know, a lot of the, I mean, I've been on the board a long time, so I've seen sort of the build of the site, and certainly, with regard to the off-site improvements and the mitigation measures, the residential construction has lesser impact on the required off-site needs than does significant commercial development at times, you know, because, I mean, it's much easier to, you know, the commercial development on that site or industrial, you know, certainly for trucks and stuff like that, is much more of a challenge for the off-site improvement, I think, on that particular corridor of Spitbrook than residential. So personally, I'm in favor of the rezone recommend, a positive recommendation, because I do think this is pretty, is very consistent with our master plan, current one, as well as it's a, it's a good place in terms of the land use and the surrounding infrastructure that we have. That's just my personal opinion, but everybody has their own, and that's fine. You can, this is a good place to voice them, so... Mr. Marley?
Yeah, I would, just to your earlier point, Scott, I mean, I, where I think you said that, you know, the primary function for us here is to look at this and say, from a, you know, from a land use perspective, you know, does the rezoning make sense, and I do think there are, you know, there are obviously different interests to the master plan that are being balanced, and so, you know, to the extent that this rezoning moves forward, it does take, you know, a chunk of land that is currently available for Park Industrial, and it makes it so that it's no longer available for that use, and so there are some, you know, competing interests there in the plan, and you're sort of, we would favor one interest or the other. With that said, you know, this land has been available for Park Industrial use for a long time, and it hasn't been used for that purpose, whereas we know that there is a very significant need for additional housing that's been well demonstrated, so I would tend to agree with you that, it seems to me that that seems to be the overriding master plan goal here, and that it would be better served by the rezoning, and as you said, you know, arguably, the impact, while I still think it will need to be addressed with some fairly substantial off-site improvements, it is probably a less intense, you know, use need than it would be if there were significant additional commercial development. So, with all that said, I think I would, I would agree with you that I would be inclined to make a favorable recommendation.
Alderman?
Mr. Ballinger? Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Sullivan alluded to a letter that was received today by the petitioner, and I don't, did we get that, or?
Nope. The petitioner was reacting to a conversation this morning that happened between the parties. I'd be happy to pass this letter along to the board members.
I guess, I, we just had another petition for referral to the Board of Alderman. I guess, I, I, we just had another petition for referral to the Board of Alderman, and we, we added, I, I hate to use the term stipulation, because I don't know if that implies there's, there's legal ramifications, but we made reference to fire, to engineering, as well as testimony that was privately given this evening. I wouldn't have any issue per se with a favorable referral, but I think at a minimum, there should be consideration of the staff letter dated today, or yesterday, rather, and there should be consideration of, I don't think that's necessarily stipulating, we're not, we're not effecting that the Alderman has to explicitly vote on those matters, but I think to ignore the letter penned by three department heads in the city is not insignificant. And I think to ignore that from a recommendation, either favorable or unfavorable, would, would be unwise, in my personal opinion. As well as, if you have a commitment, at least per the letter dated today, of the petitioner, I would think that at a minimum, those two things should be weighted in, in the Board of Alderman's decision. Then I don't, I don't think we're stipulating, that's not a condition of approval, it's just my personal opinion that those are two significant items which the planning board may want to include in, in a favorable recommendation if they decide to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Meehan?
I strongly agree with Bob's comments, and, and I'd just like to make one other, just a small procedural comment. It's, and this is part of me learning, I guess, how this process works, but there's been a number of instances where we receive the material, and I will spend whatever time I need to read it, I highlight it, I make sure I understand it from front to back. And then when we sit and we have a discussion about it, I'm told it's irrelevant, or we're not, that's not our purview, we're supposed to look at this. And I would love to know, maybe the staff can give some kind of additional guidance, but when we receive material in the mail that is part of my packet, I assume that it all, it is all relevant to the discussion I'm going to have that night, and I come prepared. If it's not relevant, please make a note of that so that we can understand the context of it.
Sure, understood.
I completely understood, and I tend to agree that this letter, because of its nature being directed to the Board of Alderman, the mayor, PDC committee, and the planning board, with those various, various audiences, we could have been more clear about where each of the statements made within it were actually directed. And so I, I agree with you, we will be more clear moving forward. I can completely understand that when you receive a letter like this, particularly because of the nature and the comments made within the letter, they do appear to be relevant to the board's action tonight. So I, I think it's comment taken, and we'll be more clear about jurisdictional boundaries moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe, if I may, just a clarification. I mean, I think partly, and Matt, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I think the point you were making partly before was that, you know, we received this, this letter, I think, as part of the sort of broader context for the discussion. I don't know that we necessarily, I mean, I think we, we can recommend with whatever commentary we want. I think as a practical matter, obviously, this, this particular letter has already been directed to the Board of Alderman, so it's, it's sort of within the record that they will be reviewing. It seems to me, though, it would be appropriate for us to say, if there's agreement on it, that we would, you know, we would like to sort of echo the comments made here, and we would like to second, you know, the, the planning department, the city engineer, and the director of economic development in terms of the, the issues they've raised, and we, we would like to reiterate that the, that the board considers those. It seems to me that would be, that would be appropriate for us to, to offer without making, without providing more specific, you know, comments as to, you know, this or that component of a potential future development.
I would just add that although the comments within may not be relevant this evening, based on this evening's jurisdiction of the board, it's important to put these comments on the record for when the board does have jurisdiction over development agreement matters, an actual site plan that's being considered. And so to be direct about it, part of the tactic with providing this letter was to lay the groundwork for when an ultimate, an application does ultimately come before this board, that we've made these concerns clear, and that although the situation may even be different when those applications come to you, we want to identify them clearly and publicly at this point in time. But again, I, I do understand the frustration.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add to one other thing, having been on the board for a long time. Referrals are always somewhat complicated for the, for the board, because there's a lot of sort of things written into statute that just require us to put our eyes on it and to provide some information to, or some opinion to the Board of Alderman. And generally speaking, we're looking at something that's written for the Board of Alderman to look at, who has a different jurisdiction than we have. And so we're supposed to provide opinion, but that opinion, it's specifically the way it's written into the, you know, the request for us to review, is to review it for land use. Right? So, so we'll see a lot of these kinds of referrals that, you know, when they buy a piece of land, let's say, or propose to buy a piece of land, the cost is not supposed, it has nothing to do with the planning board, but whether the piece of land fits in with our master plan is what we're looking at. So, so sometimes, yeah, when you're looking at referrals, it's confusing that there is, it's not, it's like we're looking at something that's not really written to us. And you do have to kind of parse the, the information to pick out the land use part of it, you know. And, you know, I, I find challenges with the board a lot on referrals, because they, again, they're not, they're not specific to us, they're super broad and generally in someone else's direction, so. So your, your somewhat frustration is, is, is common and likely is going to happen a lot more. So, Mr. Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as another sign of the letter, I just wanted to go on record, as Matt did, that I don't, I don't have objection to the proposal, and I'm sorry I have to let her, you know, introduce some confusion, but I think it, I think it was important to kind of summarize where we've been, where we're at, what some of the considerations were. As with anything, you know, the, the change from one zone to another zone brings different factors, there's going to be things to consider. The devil's always in the details, and those details will have to be vetted and worked out later, but we wanted to make sure that we, you know, raise those for, for the board's information and considering the change in the zoning, so.
Right. The other comment I'd make is, you know, the point of the Alderman being part of this board is to provide that, so what we're talking about isn't necessarily all have to be written down and delivered to the Board of Alderman. I mean, the reason we have them on the board is to carry this discussion to the Board of Alderman when they go to the next meeting. So, so there's a mechanism built into the board to, to kind of move our, our opinions and conversations, like their job being on this board is to take this and, and bring it to the, to the Alderman, so.
I, I, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger?
I, I, just for the record, I'd like, I'd like to commend city staff, community development, city engineer, as well as the director of economic development for, for penning this. And again, I'm not trying to get too hung up in the details, but I think for anybody that knows the history of this site, this is unique. This is not just any other ordinary referral that we've received here. This has been going on prior to, well, Mr. Sullivan's predecessor, prior to Mr. Hudson's predecessor. I, I think the city has been asking for this for a very, very long time, some sort of cohesive development plan moving forth where all the potential impacts can be mitigated. So I, I, I find it refreshing and appropriate that this letter was, was written. And again, it's not our job this evening to get into all the site plan details, obviously, but I, I strongly hope that, that when the Board of Alderman considers this matter, that similar discussions are, are had. I think there's been a long time coming with this site, and if you've gotten some positive feedback from the petitioner this evening, that they, they are committed in addition, I, I, you know, again, I think that's something that should be considered and not necessarily dismissed with, with a referral tonight. Again, regardless of whether that's favorable or, or unfavorable, I think this is not, you know, as simple as, as necessarily purchasing a piece of land, or some of the other things that, that we've had to give jurisdictional for. So I, I appreciate the input of all, all planning board members this evening on this, because I, I don't think we've quite seen, at least in my time on the board, I don't think we've seen a, a referral with a site that has had the amount of history that this site has had. So I, I appreciate all, all the input this evening, especially from, from staff as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Ms. Harper, anything on your end, or? Make sure.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I believe everything that I had questions about has been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Cathy?
Just for the record, I will be abstaining from my vote, just because I will be seeing this when it comes to the Alderman, and we'll be discussing it probably in great detail, so. That doesn't, that's not a commentary on what I think about the recommend or not recommend. I, I think Flatley Company has done a great job, but just as a matter of, of being appropriate, I will be abstaining from voting.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Somebody want to, shot at a motion here?
I'll make a shot at a motion, Mr. Chair. Obviously it can be discussed.
Go ahead.
But yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion for a favorable referral to the Board of Alderman regarding the petition to rezone the Gateway Hills from PI District to the RC District, subject to due consideration being given to staff letter dated February 16th, 2022, and petitioner's letter dated February 17th, 2022.
Okay. All right. Second, second, Mr. Meehan? Any further discussion by the board? Okay. I will take a roll vote on that.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Abstaining.
Net motion passes seven to zero with one extension.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Yep. Sure. This is the end of our items we have here, unless anybody has any discussion items, you know. Yeah, I don't think there's any on my end, I think, I think if there are none, you can entertain a motion to adjourn. I will. Make a motion to adjourn. All right. So a motion to adjourn by Mr. Varley. We can just take a roll vote on that, so.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
And Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Net motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight twenty-two. Thank you.